That's my second biggest fear, which is roaches.
Roaches and alligators.
Well, I think with the drought this summer, it's all the ponds dried up between us and the river. So he just kept going. But it's super huge because my grandfather's still running. We've got a well, so these are, so it's been dry. Did you have to scare them? But then they wouldn't get back in their wreck.
Top five three.
What?
Top five three.
Is your family not there?
Yeah.
Not for me.
Hi. Is this a ticket? Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're there.
You're there.
We have six thirty. So let's call a meeting to order. We'll start with the indication and pitch.
That's good.
For you and President, as stewards of your creation, please guide our hearts as we make decisions for Simonton, our neighbors, and our future. We give you our businesses, our suppliers, our constituents, and our workforce. May we always be mindful of their service. We confess that we're nothing without you, and our trust is in you completely. Do pray for the safety and support of our first responders and military at home and abroad. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item three, public comments. Courtney Cox.
I don't know how that works. Definitely not in order. Real quick, my name is Courtney Cox, seven one nine forty lane. I don't know how this exactly operates, just kind of curious on previous comments that have been made in meetings don't seem to be answered ever. And three comments going forward. One, we have had absolutely zero communication regarding the awesome victory over the concrete plant from the city. I would think that the thousands of folks or thousand of folks that showed up at that particular meeting would like to hear something just to keep us from speculating in the future that it's just going to be moved to an ETJ area that we can't control. Number two, again, the items that we bring up in these meetings are never really answered. They're never really addressed. And I don't know when you bring up new business in order for that to be addressed. It's, you get the nod, the head nod, and then move on, and it's never really brought up. Third, and lastly, I do not take part in the trash situation simply because that's a whole debacle in and of itself. I had my fair share of time with them and learned my lesson. That doesn't seem to be getting better. And I know, I know it's a, it's an agenda topic. However, I would like to know if we have the option to do something citywide. I know it sounds like, like some sort of apartment complex or whatever the case may be, but I'm also a city council member in another city, in another part of the state, and we had the same issues because it's a, it's a very rural area, that kind of thing. And we opted for a, just a different setup to where we had a dumpster and two recycling bins that were set up. And yes, we dealt with the people that were taking advantage of that, but those were dealt with very quickly, and it was no longer an issue. That particular residence is no bigger than this one, and I just don't see why that wouldn't be an option considering how much we pay. And it would be a lot, it would be one pickup or two, two or three pickups versus, you know, two hundred and fifty where they're just not picking up the trash, not responding, not sending outside stickers and all of that good stuff. So that's all I've got.
First, is this door-to-door, I agree, versus door-to-door service?
Well, absolutely. I don't, I don't utilize the door-to-door service because it doesn't work. It never worked for me. From the minute I moved into this neighborhood, it never worked for me. I paid for a year in advance. I went, it took me probably the better part of a year to get my money back because they just never would, they wouldn't pick up mine. They would pick up my neighbor across the street and say they picked up mine, and yeah, it was, it was just kind of a train wreck, so I opted out. So that's all I've got.
Dean McJackin.
Thank you, Council. I think what I heard kind of quarterly was frustration, at least that I felt, that when items have been on the agenda, it seems like there's a foregone conclusion. Then when reasonable objections come up, the council doesn't change their behavior. They don't, they don't say, okay, that's a great plan, let's wait, let's talk about, let's think about it, let's do this at a different council meeting after we add more information. And so there's a sense that there's a deafness here. So I'll just speak very quickly. Thank you for approving quarterly financials. That tells me at least you're reviewing them, something that hasn't been done for years in an open council meeting. I appreciate seeing the JIS map. I'm eager to see the features and benefits that that's going to bring. Interested to see about the request for the qualifications on Simonton comprehensive plan, recognizing that zoning is still a question mark, but if we're going to do the comprehensive plan, just know that when you do the math, it's about seven hundred and fifty bucks a person, a household. And when I do the simple math, that would be based on what we learned in, I think it was September, where the number of the sum, that was two hundred and a thousand dollars. So you do the math, ten hundred and fifty dollars a household is what we're paying for that. So I hope that we get good benefit from it. The item, item five C regarding replacing the EDC A board, and I presume EDC board, B board is next in line, with council members solely instead of going back to the public and saying who would be willing to serve is a mistake. I've got the bylaws, I've got the corporate documents. The law says that their funds are their funds. They've been so far coagulated, I don't know, I haven't heard that they're protected funds. Maybe they are. But when we heard in September eighth at the meeting that the city had three million dollars in revenue, those funds were included in their revenue, and those are not city funds, they are EDC A and B funds. So the idea that you provide oversight to a board that you can fully replace, and you do have the right legally to replace them with yourselves, I'm not contesting that. But the oversight that you provide, council provides to administration, is the same oversight that they provide to EDC A and B. And when you become the EDC A and/or B, you cannot oversee yourself. Then all we can do is wait for, for a financial audit, which we have not had for four years. This city is supposed to do audits every year, hasn't had an audit in four years. It's criminal. That is literally not legal. So I would really appreciate the fact that we could boost our oversight, the council boosts oversight of the administration, that, because that's how it's set up. So, and regarding Texas Pride, just be careful. They do pick up the trash, and not only who else sits in line behind them. Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Ray Williams.
Good evening. My name is Ray Williams. I live at ninety-four sixteen Barnes Road, right around the corner here. I have just a couple of comments and a couple of suggestions I'd like to make. Kind of goes back to late December when I got my tax bill. I was kind of astounded that my tax had gone up one hundred and twenty-four percent over what I paid last year and what the estimated tax was shown to be on this statement that I got from the county earlier in the year. So I had to wonder what's going on here, really. And I have to say, one of the first things that came in my mind was that, you know, the city of Simonton sends me an email message when there's a burn banding coming on, or when there's a big thunderstorm coming. But they didn't send me an email message when there was a big tax storm coming my way. So I think it kind of folds back to some of the earlier comments about communication. I think it'd be good if the city council would consider sending an email-type newsletter, you know, not every month, but maybe once a quarter. Doesn't have to be long and drawn out, you know, just a few facts. Hey, what's going on in the community? What's coming up? You know, what should we expect? And just so we can be more involved and more informed. I know there's a website, but websites are very passive. You know, you have to go there, you have to sign in, you have to hunt for stuff. Emails are great. I like to get the email in a news form. So anyway, in the facts of my, in the face of my tax bill, I went to doing some hunting, and I went to the, to the city website, and I found the budget. And I go down looking through the budget, and a few things really jumped out at me. The first thing that jumped out at me was consulting. Quarter of a million dollars for consulting. You know, what is this? What could this be about? Well, okay. And then I go a little further down, and I see eighth of a million dollars for, what do they call it? Economic Development Corporation? Hmm, what's that mean? I know when I look at the city website, it talks about Simonton, City City for Your Country Living. Well, I would hope that this Economic Development Council is trying to keep us country living. I think most of us don't want a lot of economic development around here. So anyway, I looked a little further down the road, and I see quarter of a million dollars payroll for a little city like Simonton? Hmm. Well, how many employees are there? And who are they? What do they do? How much do they get paid? And I see we're paying, I guess, both for these people? Well, maybe that's fine, but again, you know, who are they and how much and like that? Well, the bottom line of all this is, it's really all about transparency. And I go back to the budget, I've got it there on my computer, it's twenty-one pages long. I do sorting and searching, looking for consultants. Who are the consultants? You know, maybe it's down deeper. Nothing. I go looking in there for Economic Development Council. I find nothing but Economic Development Council, eighth of a million dollars. I look down further into payroll, personnel, I do all these searches, I find nothing except three lineups, payroll, payroll expenses, and Texas Minus Full Employees Retirement Fund. Well, I would expect a lot more information. Now, I have a lot of book experience, believe me. I'm an old guy. I've been around. I know a lot about budgets, and I know how people do budgets. They throw a lot of money into broad categories so they cover themselves. And then they, they add it all up, and they request funding based on that long list of stuff. And that's what's happened to us. It's a long list of stuff, a lot of broad categories, and our tax rate and everything's based on that. And we have very little specifics about what it's all for. So I guess the suggestion I would make is that maybe it's too late this year, but next year when we do the budget, let's have some details about budget items, what's included, who's getting this money? You know, it's all about transparency. And government everywhere, all the way to Washington DC, is full of this sort of thing where they put lots of money in broad categories, which just leads to a lot of discretionary spending that's not really warranted. So those are my comments. My two suggestions are, one is an email newsletter, maybe just quarterly, not long and drawn out. The second suggestion is, let's have some more detail in the budget.
Great, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
And last three, Christie Smith. How great.
Christie Smith, three six six three zero Canyon Road. First, I would like to take a minute to thank Erica and Jenna for all the hours of dedication and massive phone calls from all of us to stop the concrete plant. Keep Simonton Beautiful Board was instrumental in research as well. Barbara Minton, I'm putting this on the record. Barbara Minton, Cinder Frost, and myself spent about two thousand dollars of our own money on banners, signs, and protest fans. We collected a hundred and twenty dollars in donations from the complete community. Not that we needed it, but it's just so y'all understand the cost. It wasn't free. We didn't just not plan this, it didn't just happen. So anyway, I guess having clean air to breathe in Simonton is one of our greatest community accomplishments, better than mucking three feet of water out of our homes. So I've lived here, and I added this on when I go, so I've lived here for twenty years in this community with multiple trash trucks running up and down our streets from five different vendors at one time, and we were Texas Pride's first customer. I love Texas Pride because number one, they email communicate if they're not coming. Number two, they pick up recycling, and I used to drive to Blum Road because I recycle all my salon and all my house. And with my old trash company, she would call me and say I hadn't paid and I had paid because she was ninety years old, and most of the time their trucks were broke down, and we sat on our trucks for, on our trash for thirty days. So if Texas Pride is like two days late in communicating that they're getting our trash, like there's a little forgiveness there. Anyway, that's just my two cents because I've lived here a long time, so I've seen crazy. Anyway, I'm thankful for that email communication, and most importantly, I'm thankful for all that y'all do for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Christie, for fighting the concrete battle.
All of us, group effort. Y'all showed up, we needed that.
Erica, I don't think that's everybody. I signed up.
I'll write them a list.
I feel, sit down.
Okay, but go ahead, I just don't have it on my desk.
There's two.
Stayed on there.
Sorry. Kids.
Faith Haley, three six nine three three Front Lock Street. I just want to say that for many years, I've lived out there, I think about sixteen years now, seventeen, and I was like everybody else, busy raising kids and taking care of my parents. After my dad died in oh eight, I spent most of my time in the car traveling to Branson, Missouri, trying to take care of my mom until I finally convinced her to come down here. She lived with me till she was a hundred years old, so I've had my hands full for many years running a company and taking care of her. But last fall, when we had the, the meeting about taxes, that's when I really realized, sitting here for two hours with my neighbors and really having the feeling that, I think Dan used the word deafness, was occurring, that's how we feel, most of the community, that you just aren't listening to us. And I just want to state that. Also, I, in looking over the agenda items, I also agree that I don't think that the city council should be on this board for the EDC A because that's, that's sort of, I've got chickens, and that's kind of like the fox guard in the penthouse, in my opinion. I just don't think there's good, that's good oversight. So I, along with everybody else, thought there should be a giant party when we got that letter in the mail saying that the concrete patch plant was not going to happen. So at least at this location, I really appreciate everybody coming together and fighting that. So that's it. Other than, I met Ray a few minutes ago, and I agree with so many things that he said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faith. And then we have Sarah.
Sarah Borak, three six six one five Ranchero Road. I appreciate everybody here. I say it every time, leading government, it's not anything, it's not a position that I want or I don't like myself to. So I appreciate every position each and every one of you take on when you're a part of this meeting. I also appreciate the fact that each and every person in this room wants to be represented accurately and heard, and I don't feel hurt. I showed up, like you did, to the meeting, to the board. I elected to not to be at my son's practice tonight, to spend my time here, which for me is like gold. Being with my son is gold. To, to tell you guys that I'm not feeling like I'm heard. I have one question for the council, if you would actually be willing to answer it. So I showed up, and I regretted not asking one question last time. The one question I regretted not asking you guys is when I came, I said, I moved to a small community for a reason, so that we could be a small town, we could work together, we could do things together, we could work together, we could maybe use our taxes and maybe escalate the taxes at a decompressed or not escalated rate. We asked, I think, for fifty percent at that board, and they were voted down. I'm asking today for the board, y'all are appointing yourselves, I think, what is it called?
EDC.
BCA?
EDC.
BPCA?
ED.
Whatever it is. Are y'all willing to hear us out and vote? Anybody in here or other members, other than yourselves, part of that board? I'd ask an, an answer from Stacy. Go see, go to first.
The issue right now is we can't legally respond to your questions.
But are you, but are you willing to consider that? Because you weren't that night.
So it's on the agenda, and we'll be talking about that some more tonight, and the board members will discuss. And so I think we're going to expand on it more when the item comes up. That's okay. And you'll be welcomed.
I appreciate it. We'll check back. Thank you.
I appreciate all hearing.
Thank you very much.
I don't think it cut you off if you had something else.
No, that's it. I just wanted to make sure that I'm not showing up here for no reason.
Anybody else that wanted to make a public comment that maybe didn't sign up yet or still like to?
Great. Thank you, everybody, for that. Any items that are not on the agenda that council can't deliberate and respond, we can add items to the subsequent agenda. Some of them we can make comment, especially these items that are coming up on the agenda. So we'll talk more about several of these things as we go down the list tonight. I hear you saying that you're not feeling heard, and we are working on that, working on some ideas for how can we change that? What can be different? What, you know, we feel like we're being as transparent as possible, but obviously we've got to disconnect from what we think we're putting out there and what you're doing. So working on that, I have an item during reports, I'll just go ahead and say it, we were working with a potential social media liaison, if you will, and that didn't work out with that person, but we certainly got a whole lot of information about what that scope of work would look like. What could that person do for us? What should we be asking for? How could that make sure that we get more information out to y'all? Because I would, I would love everybody to understand that, for example, on the budget, we have multiple workshops, they're public, before it comes down to when everybody came, it was budget voting time, and we've been through the process. Not everybody was engaged at that point, so that goes back to what we figure out to do with our social media or mix of communication to your point, to do more outreach maybe for that going forward. So I hear you. I really appreciate each of you saying that tonight. It definitely brings home the point for more than one person to share how they're feeling about it. We'll, we'll work more on that and ensure it be what we come up with, and I appreciate the good ideas about it.
Can I ask a really dumb, random question? We've got some random faces over here that weren't at this table the last, I don't know, four meetings. Do we know who these folks are?
Well, if you don't need them, so you don't do the job.
Okay, just check it because that wasn't on there. Just check it.
I do have a quick question, if that's okay.
Okay, don't be sad if I can't respond, but please tell us what it is.
No, you're good. Because you mentioned social media, and this one kind of threw me for a loop. So I am on, we all know the different social media pages, that's not the topic, but I got invited to a page, and I was, and I accepted because it says City of Simonton. And I went to this page today, and I was like, this isn't the city of Simonton. Like, it was all kind of negative. I have no idea who's the admin on that. I know nothing.
That's me.
Okay, so it's very, I, not knowing it was you, I don't know you, so that's, that's fine, but as a person looking, and you're talking about getting things out there to us, it literally says City of Simonton, and it's nothing positive.
It doesn't say City of Simonton, ma'am.
What does it say?
It says the unofficial information and something else. It says unofficial.
So it says City of Simonton unofficial?
It does not claim to be the City of Simonton anything.
So you're not alone in the confusion it causes. It is not city official.
Okay.
And at this point, there isn't anything we can do about that except try and work together to make a clear message the best we can.
Okay, because when I, like I said, now I know, I mean, doesn't matter.
The other page just likes Texas music and stuff.
Yeah, I just went there thinking that it was going to provide me information about things, and I was very, just kind of turned off. And so I was, that was my question, because when you brought up social media, I was like, wait a minute. Okay, so now I know it's not, okay.
Yeah, you know.
And if ever you go to a page and it doesn't seem, you're not sure, y'all please go for it and let us know, email, call, instant message, anything at all, and let us know. And if it's something we already know about, for sure, we'll be investigating that, and if it is something we know about, we'll, we'll share with you, you know.
I, also, could I ask a quick question? When you said social media liaison, to me, that sounds like we're going to pay out more money for something, and I thought, wouldn't our city secretary or city manager, I mean, everybody's on social media, that they'd just be able to easily post things that we need to know as a community?
So yes and no. They do that today. Their workload is significant even without that. So we recognize that we aren't getting enough things out there and maybe some of the types of things we'd like to share because there is not enough time in a day, and also, that's not our expertise. It's certainly not mine. I can barely manage my stuff and answer things on Facebook sometimes. They're really great at it, but their focus is on other things that are so much more escalated in the importance of our list, like managing grants and all the things that are just a normal weekly, monthly, quarterly, return order. So we want them to be able to focus on that. If we were to find a person, it would be, you know, you'd have to pay for their services and their expertise. We are at the very infancy stage of figuring that out. That's why finding out more about what's going to work to ask for was a good result of this exercise. Somebody who could help us talk about the good things that are going on, things that are coming up, talk about how great Simonton is. So we aren't really sending things out unless it's holiday specific or there's something important coming up we want you to know about, but there's something other things that we could feel like could be shared. So like celebration and, you know, more than just a single post about the concrete plant would, would be awesome, but we don't have the time or the expertise today to really do that job to justice that it could be. And it could be super cheap. I'm sure council won't, won't vote to spend a huge amount of money on that, but if we can figure out what that actually looks like, we're trying to understand it.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I looked carefully at today's
Because there is not enough time in a day and also that's not our expertise. It's certainly not mine. I, I can barely manage my stuff and answer things on Facebook sometimes. They're really great at it, but their focus is on other things that are so much more escalated in the importance of our list, like managing grants and all the things that are just a normal weekly, monthly, quarterly, yearly turnover. So we want them to be able to focus on that. If we were to find a person, it would be a, you know, you'd have to pay for their services and their expertise. We are at the very infancy stage of figuring that out. That's why finding out more about what's going to work to ask for was a good result of this exercise. Somebody who could help us talk about the good things that are going on, things that are coming up, talk about how great Simonton is. So we aren't really sending things out unless it's holiday specific or there's something important coming up we want you to know about. But there's something other things that we could feel like could be shared. So like celebration and, you know, more than just a single post about the concrete plant would be awesome. But we don't have the time or the expertise today to really do that job to justice that it could be. And it could be super cheap. I'm sure council won't, won't vote to spend a huge amount of money on that, but if we can figure out what that actually looks like, we're trying to understand it.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I looked carefully at today's website and I didn't see anything posted about any sort of current events or current news or Economic Development Council or GIS or the concrete plant or any recent development.
Information is posted within the various tabs on the website and we've made some social media posts on Facebook and Instagram.
Facebook and Instagram don't count. This official thing is the city website. Facebook and Instagram don't count. It's full of fake news and all kinds of stuff.
Mayor, I'm the city attorney, by the way, and I would just caution this on the agenda, so I would probably just move on.
We've gone off topic, so we'll take note of that and address further.
Thank you.
What's the name of the city attorney?
Justin Cruz.
Okay, is, are you on that?
No, he's just on the listing for the attorney board or whatever.
Consider to take action on consent agenda. Counsel, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Item five, new business. Presentation of the new Simonton GIS map by LJA Engineering. Y'all may have met Craig Calcomine before, if you haven't, he's our city engineer. And Martini is here to show us this really cool, interesting tool that we've talked about last fall. It's required of our municipality, but there are so many great features that you can use and people that are coming to look at Simonton or have interest in Simonton and use this tool online. Turn it over.
So I'll give, I'll give an overview. So a couple of things I would start with, and this is a, this is a, a living, uh, interactive site. The site, uh, the data can be updated, changed, uh, added, subtracted, all those things as, as we move, as we move forward. So what we've started with is kind of the base template of that. Starting with the capital improvements the city has completed, the capital improvements that we are proposing to complete. We as the city. Uh, then the funding sources for those are also on here. Martini referred here. We get some questions on the various districts with all the, and I say district, special districts, as all the development occurs around us. So that's in there, including the county assistance district that some have heard of and some quite not. But that would be an up and coming, morally talked about thing from a county perspective. Uh, and then emergency management layers. Those are kind of the, uh, kind of the emergency management items that we get the most questions on. It's from residents and everything. It has river gauges. It has evacuation, kind of a zone for evacuations, where the floodgates are, flood gauges. And then, of course, city hall access, the EOC. And then city layers, city limits, ETJ, and then there's some Portland County and FEMA layers. So again, this is kind of the base of everything that we've, we've kind of worked through. Of all the things, a one stop shop for all the, the data, graphical data or geographical data in the city. Then we reference the county and National Weather Service and those other sources. Again, because if you go out there, if you go, especially on the flood side, this is my background. You go on the flood side, you will find a plethora of, of websites to find this gauge or this gauge or this information or this information from the different, uh, from the different sources. So we try to combine that, especially the river gauges, as, as we will get a flood at some point. It's, it's inevitable, hopefully for a long, long, long time. But as the city references in their communications, the Richmond gauge, the Hempstead gauge, the San Philip gauge, and all the gauges that we reference from a flood's perspective here in the city and across Portland County. Somebody can go to this and figure out what gauge that is in the location. So with that, Martini, if you want to kind of slow you down a little.
So when you first go on and you go to the city site, this URL will be there. You'll click on it, this will bring you to, I'm actually zoomed in at 150%, just so we can see. The first panel is the feature details. So in this panel here, you'll see all the layers that Greg just mentioned. All these layers here has extra information, and so when we go to the layers, we'll see that. We have a quick measure button that if you want to measure. It's up to you. It gives you a length and long, gives you path to the distance area and square footage as well. So two other layers. We have three base maps down here, so they're your first vector base maps, it's your streets. Then we have near map. Take a little time to load. The reason why we have another base map, because near map only covers a portion. Simonton, so anything west of the river, hopefully eventually it will be flown. Near map for the Houston area has flown three times a year. So, uh, this last update was sometime around October 2022. But you have the option to click on the next, um, base map, which is the full area. Full aerial. This aerial is a little outdated, maybe most likely like a year behind, but it, it does get updated, um, kind of frequently as near map. As Greg mentioned, here are all your layers. You have your proposed, um, capital improvements. We can zoom in, you can see the layers, you can actually identify. And so when you click on a map, it, it highlights what you want to look at. So I'm going to click on the Simonton, um, city limits. We have links here. I don't know if y'all noticed, there's some maps over here, but we have smaller versions, that's one, two, eleven by seventeen, that you can read up. It's a PDF document, so if you want to print them out, you can. Don't take a little time there.
What is that showing?
This here? It originally showed these maps here, but in a smaller version.
So in the last ditch drainage, whatever that was, that changed about, I don't know, 10 times from the beginning, um, to the actual culmination of that project. Will this particular map update us regarding those changes? Or are we just going to get dealt with what we get dealt with? That poor guy digging up my ditch almost got shot, I'm not going to lie.
The goal, the, the goal is on the, on the ditch projects to, you update them as, you know, the, the, what's being shown here on this particular layer is the future work, uh, or the immediate future work. I'll say it that way. And so there are some things that are, are subject to change if the market, hopefully it starts to decline with some of the construction prices. So it may expand, it may shrink depending on, on, on how the market is when it's bid. But, um, but yes, this, the goal is to update this with the projects that, this is right now is our target. When we let the projects or bid those projects out and have a contract, another layer will pop in and say, these are the ones that are under construction and will give that estimated timeframe for construction. That's kind of the goal that, that we've envisioned.
And the city's paying for this?
This is a city.
On the city timeline? Because I don't have a ditch yet.
You don't have a road, girl.
Oh. Yes, so this is, this is the current, so the city has identified, uh, I guess through grants right now, the current. And so that's what's here first. We're going through, we're going through beyond this and, and the city had a capital improvements plan that every ditch and every street identified. And so we're hitting it in a systematic kind of priority from, from what was looked at. And so we are expanding that and, and moving it forward. But yes, this overall, this will start to adjust and you'll see different ditches pop in, with the communication of this project's funded and so on and so forth.
How relevant will that be considering that the system is all, or that the information that's already there is about a year past?
Dodges the error in these streets.
But I would assume that the aerials have been the same or will stay the same.
I've looked here, how?
Well, the aerials, the aerials themselves will, the aerials themselves will update on their, on their services. When they update. The ditch line work will update it when the city, uh, funds the project and then constructs the project.
This website we're talking about here, um, I didn't see a line item in the budget for this.
It's the LJA mapping. It's this one, Mr. Ray. It's this top one.
The LJA.
That's not the budget.
Yeah, but it was on, it was on there. I promise you it was on there.
How much is it?
A lot.
How much is a lot?
Well, it's not on my street, so I don't care.
I don't remember the exact amount, but it was on there, I promise you. I can show you.
It's $5,000.
How many?
$5,000.
To develop the computer system?
To develop this mapping.
Take the map from Portland County.
I'm a computer professional and I don't think we can get going on any project of this nature for $5,000. And the big question too is the ongoing maintenance and feeding up the data into the system. And how's that going to be covered and voted for? And is there really a compelling reason to do this when it's going to drive up our taxes so much?
Well, we're required to have a GIS map on our website.
Who requires that?
The state law.
That's it. I want to see that law.
And to your point, Courtney, Craig, do you want to maybe give just a little bit about, this is not just the map. We pulled it from Portland County, stuck it on there and charged $5,000. That's not what this is.
The, the first, the two sets are city owned layers that have been created, uh, both from, well, mainly the current engineer, uh, but based on our, my previous experience, uh, ditches that were worked on before this last ditch project. So those are, those are layers that are owned and maintained by the city and they'll be updated. The city layers is a combination of actually city owned, uh, layers. They're shared with the county, um, city limits and ETJ, the county requests from the city on a, on an annual basis to just make sure there's no updates, which there's not a lot of updates to the city limits and ETJs at this moment. The emergency management layers, that's a layer that's primarily, uh, all of that is developed by the, uh, by this, by this effort, utilizing, uh, existing available data. Again, trying to put it up. And so, uh, but there are like the county layer, uh, the FEMA layer, those are county and federal, uh, layers that we've called in. We've pulled in here, again, so that everybody, if they go here, they can get all of that without having to go to FEMA's website or the county's website for the city. The county is also, it doesn't really apply to the, the Valley Lodge area, but Portland County's mapping stops at the county line. So this takes all the city mapping that will be there, right now it's just the TJ, uh, north of the county line. We envision once the BRA really gets hot and heavy with the Brazos, uh, or the Allen's Creek-Rosemore project, we'll try to link some information to that, so it's easily found in there. But yes, this is, there's, there's a mixture of city owned data, which is the city's projects, and then other data sources trying to consolidate those into one, again, kind of a one stop shop.
Trying to be user friendly and everything together.
But again, and I'm not trying to be argumentative by any means, but that information that you just pulled up on the current ditches that have been recently dug, it's not accurate. It's not accurate. They dug up 100% of my property, knocking my fence over and laying it in the ditch.
Oh, so they completed.
Yeah, and, and then when I called, contacted the city, granted, my, my fence was old, probably needs to be replaced anyway. However, when I contacted the city, I said, I was not on this map. They said, sorry, we've reallocated some leftover funds to dig out some extra ditches. And they did not dig out the ditches across the street from me that were on that map. So now we've got super shallow ditches on one side and I, my ditches are at least four and a half feet deep.
But you got ditches.
That are not trying to flood my property, but still, I mean, those are not accurate is all I'm getting at. Not to be argumentative, but again, I mean, with, with, I, I appreciate the maps, the maps are great, but if they're not up to date, I, I don't understand the point of that.
If something needs re-revise for you, we appreciate that and you got dragged out.
Got it. That was the only reason I asked the question, I was just curious.
I just have a question, a general question on what I'm looking at exactly. So some of these are, are projects that are already being completed? Some of them are projects that need to be completed? Is that what? I can't see from my little corner right here.
There's two data sets. There's one that's projects that have been completed to date. In the two major projects, the one in 2018, 2019, extended to 2020, I think. And then there's the 2021, 2022 project. There's the floodgates that the county finished for the city. And the proposed ones are just currently are just the proposed ones that a funding source has been identified and the city's working through that process right now. Ultimately, uh, we're going through in the next phase and priority of the ditches and the roads will be added on here. And the hope is to have kind of a tentative timeframe or fiscal year, kind of, whether it's part of the five-year plan or 10-year plan, I'm just throwing this out as just ballpark numbers, but kind of that timeframe of where those projects will fall. So again, this, right now it's the projects that have been completed, the projects that have a funding source and over probably this year, we'll have, uh, we'll have more data on proposed projects and kind of when those will hopefully get funded.
So they're not funded yet?
No, he said five to 10 years more.
Well, I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing that out as a five to 10 year CIP.
Well, I've looked here five years and I haven't had ditches yet. So calculate that.
So the ditches, yes. So in this case, the proposed ditches that have a funding source identified are in the, it's a reddish color with a yellow. It kind of tints it down with the, and then if you click on the roadway, uh, also with the same funding source, we are anticipating, uh, resurf it or basically repaving, uh, Wagam, Lariat and a piece of Ringland. Those are the first, again, those are the first, those standpoint of getting the major ins and outs. And then from there, the city's got the cost to then expand it from there, so.
Will I get in trouble if I fix my ditch? Because the pipe that keeps it open, the water in, if they're completely shut, I have to rake out my ditch.
Totally illegal.
If you would contact.
You can call us.
I'm just asking.
You can call us and we can have Roden Bridge come out there. And they can either judge them out or if they need to replace, they'll, they'll talk to you about that too.
They just, I guess, need to be open, the metal pieces?
Like the end parts?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you call me, I can, I can get your information and send a request to Roden Bridge.
I didn't understand from my earlier question. Is it, a lot of data has to be fed into this thing kind of constantly to keep all the information up to date and bring in data from the, the flood control district? Who's going to do all that?
Well, a lot of that stuff is built in automatically with, because, you know, when FEMA, when FEMA updates their stuff every five, 10, 15 years, that they, they push that data set, it gets, it gets loaded in here. The city's data, it's updated during design phase of the project, so it's part of the design costs of the, uh, the streets and the roads. But again, the links, unless Harris County owns the gauge or Portland County pays Harris County to maintain the gauge at 1489. So as long as Harris County doesn't change their web link, it will always, it will always go to that web link. So it's, it's very minimal effort on, on the data side because a lot of the data, like we said, all the ditch stuff and those things were kind of created for the grant projects, for updating the CIP maps, for all that and, and everything like that. So those layers and the city layers will get updated as, as those projects move forward.
We already have the base, the data scheme.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, is the districts, I don't know. So it's all those special types of districts. There's, there's MUDS out there, there's the county assistance district, which is, uh, one of the hot topics. And then, of course, uh, we have the, the ESD boundary. And these are, these are a mixture of TCQ, or this is all TCQ.
Uh, this is all TCQ.
So TCQ basically is the clearinghouse for all the special districts. So this is their data. Every now and then we do find errors in it that we've had to tweak. But generally, it's, it's fairly good. And then the emergency management layers, uh, we don't anticipate those changing significantly. One of the things that we have talked about with, uh, Portland County Drainage District and Roden Bridge is potentially, again, as, uh, Roden Bridge people retire and Drainage District people retire, that knowledge of evacuations and what everybody's gone year after year when it floods, uh, goes missing. So one of the things that we're really trying to do with this, and it's kind of in the background, it's documented. So one of the things that we're really trying to do with this, and it's kind of in the background, it's documents and layers, is, you know, when the county's doing pumping, when, when the county kind of shuts everything down and calls for that evacuation, kind of making sure, again, one of the eye-opening things for me when I was here during the twenty sixteen flood, was coming across some residents that, even though I think the city and the county were out and about trying to warn people, other people who didn't know that the Brazos River was coming up and having that event. And that one was a, that one was a long delay that we hadn't seen, we hadn't seen in a long time. And then there was, of course, Harvey was the quick, the quick rise that really threw everybody across the region. So again, that, those kind of things, again, emergency management, because that's one of the biggest things that we see is, is just confusion, people not knowing what sources to go to, so again, having that central spot that we can, we can go back to.
To your point, I would just point out that that big, huge whiteboard that's against the wall behind the door back there is full of data from twenty seventeen, probably, twenty sixteen, of when the water is this high, which gates get activated. So we needed to be a whole lot more technical than a whiteboard that somebody kept record of. So this is gonna give us a full, better way to keep those sorts of things and have them available to everybody.
And while we're on this, I will make a, a public service announcement for, on behalf of the county, that we're trying to load here. So the county has just spent, since Harvey, the county has spent a lot of resources on basically remodeling and remapping the entire, the entire county. Some watersheds are a little bit better than the others, but generally, it's, it's the latest and greatest methodology with modeling. And so what the county has, has built, and they have on their website that we link to, this is a good resource for residents, is, I should do the layers tab, on the layers tab, which is the three lines. Basically, what the county has added is, based on their mapping, which has been kind of compared to Harvey and the other floods that we've seen, is when you see the National Weather Service put out the Richmond gauge, it will hit forty-six. You click on forty-six. I guess you probably turn off the, I think fifty-five is also followed. So basically, you can come on here and the county releases that statement that it's gonna, that the Richmond gauge is gonna hit forty-six. You can see at least from a, a modeling standpoint, a computer-generated modeling standpoint, what the flooding should look like at that. And then if you go to, go to fifty-two. And so again, you hear Richmond says a fifty-two, you can see both, if you click on, if you click on like an area of.
That's a lot of PTSD right there.
So basically, in their mapping, in, that's built in this mapping, it gives you a rough approximate water surface elevation. My engineering floodplain administrator disclaimer, which is more borderline attorney disclaimer, is that this information is, is hypothetical in a way, so it's subject to change. In Harvey, based on the models that we saw released during Harvey, they were off anywhere from six to eighteen inches, which we would expect that to come a little bit further down based on this technology or the modeling that's done now versus before. But also, they have the depth, so if you know, so if you know your slab, if that happens to be the dot that you clicked on and you know your slab elevation, you can do a relatively quick comparison with that disclaimer that it could be off, but, to pay attention. And then there's the depth, so if you don't know your slab elevation, but you may know your natural ground, or you can see, you can see that in front of my lot, it says it's gonna get two feet deeper or whatever that depth is. So the county's built that all the way up to about the Harvey level, which is at fifty-nine on here, fifty-five, or fifty-five, which Harvey was fifty-five one nine at Richmond. So again, if you, if you really wanna have nightmares, I know a lot of people live and breathe it, there's, there's of course, the Harvey map. And so if we get to a situation where we see above Harvey levels, which I hope we never see, but it's possible, the county will push out that data in a very, very similar format, so. But I'll, I wanna make sure that's known, because that's kind of critical information for people to check. Also, on their website, we don't have it linked, which we probably should, they also have the hypothetical design storms. So in there is the one-hundred-year floodplain. That is essentially, if FEMA came knocking on our door tomorrow and said, hey, we want to remap you, that's essentially what the one-hundred-year floodplain would look like. So I'll, we'll get that one added, but it's also data online that's, that's important, because that's, that's the effective floodplain, which graphically, the extent hasn't changed that much. What's changed a little bit is kind of the water surface elevation has gone up and some places down and others. But again, all that, that floodplain data is, is also there. What else we're missing?
Did you say there's a link to the county website?
Yes, there's a link to the county's website that has all the gauges, and then there's a separate link that will get added to that same thing that shows like the hypothetical storms, like your one-hundred-year that they're proposing in the future.
So there's no way to push that information to our GIS map?
We can't. We have that data, so if the city would like that shown on this map, we can, we can definitely ask. Yeah, it's, it's data that already exists in a format. We're using it for other exhibits and things, both around the city and other parts of Portman County. Actually, we're using it for parts of Austin and Waller County as well, because they mapped, the city's model, or the county's model goes pretty much north of Hempstead all the way to the coast, so it's, it's a pretty detailed model. And we're hoping that the Brazos River Authority is using that for, for present board, but that's a whole other thing that we'll, we'll talk about in a future meeting.
Speaking of which, Craig, do you expect that we'll either see or be able to add the erosion project information, if you will, to this mapping so it can be seen by residents?
Yes, so one, yeah, so what, what we will do, once, once we get more information from HGAC, we can add the line work, which we can already go and have the line work, because we already have the line work. But then all the project information, we can fill in as soon as we get more information from Portman County HGAC.
Any other questions? No, thank you for your work.
And again, this is, this is a, a living website, so if you can, if you can draw it on a map, we can add it to this map, so.
Can you draw it, Craig? I appreciate you flipping out.
What's that?
Can you do the dark crayons?
Not all of this, like, because that's only two and a half miles, but all the dishes that aren't.
So, and the reason why we use this other, like Martine said, near maps updated three times a year, HGAC's updated every other year, so the other map, the other aerial we actually use is the annual. We do have the HGAC aerials, if anybody is curious about those, but those are updated, I guess we'll get another update here. The twenty twenty-two aerial should come out at the end of twenty twenty-three or when they're, so. So they, they fly it in twenty twenty-two, the world usually gets it, or the public usually gets it about eight to twelve months after they fly it.
And so, this is available, we're going live after, or is it already posted on our site?
It's not posted yet.
Let's see, we gave the city a link, we wanted to present it to y'all and everybody, so if there's any last-minute changes that anybody can think of, we can make those changes, but yeah, it's, it's ready to be a link to the city's website as soon as y'all are.
I think we're gonna go ahead and go with it, so y'all will be able to access it after tomorrow.
Does it show watersheds, waterways? Does it show that?
We have, we have, we have streams. So we do, we do have the streams, that's something we could add, because really the two biggest drainage areas, although it's all the Brazos River drainage area, but we could add a Fessys Creek and a, what's truly the Brazos and what's Fessys Creek before it gets to Brazos, so that's, that's data that we have that we could also add.
If there's something, a specific view you would like be able to?
No, it's more than for, if new homeowners or something, they, they wanna know exactly where it is, how far they are from it, it would be beneficial. Not for me, I ain't going nowhere so.
Do you know where the yellow lines are?
Yellow, so the yellow lines in this case are the cross-sections. No, that's not.
They're the cross-sections, so you can click on them and it'll tell you the water surface elevation. You'll zoom in, it'll, it'll start popping up.
Cross, use my ignorance here, but cross-sections of what?
So of the, oh, so how they draw the floodplain is they have a computer model. And so in that computer model, they have a series of cross-sections, which is basically the natural ground as it goes down the, the stream, and so basically, those are just the cross-sections. But this is FEMA's cross-sections. What's gonna be an interesting thing to watch is, is the county, the, the modeling world is changing instead of traditional cross-sections like this. It's all two-dimensional, which basically means they actually have water that goes over natural ground. And so it's a lot more high-tech, and however we're gonna show cross-sections in the future is something that the folks at the Army Corps and FEMA haven't quite figured out, because that's kind of what FEMA uses as a baseline. But, but for now, it is, it's the cross-sections. And so if you, if you go back up to Valley Lodge, zoom in.
Actually, I'm more curious if you go down to south fourteen eighty-nine.
Okay, where at?
Right along fourteen eighty-nine. I'd love to see what that new municipal district is doing to our flood areas. Because that area is being built up significantly, so I would assume those lines are gonna change pretty dramatically, fairly quickly, correct?
They, they, so if it's in the floodplain, the county requires them to remodel to show what impacts or what impacts have to be mitigated, so. The county currently, because where the world is on the FEMA side, I don't think any of those changes have made it to an official map change, so they won't show up yet. But yes, the county, in all the development in the floodplain, the county will make them put the development in these cross-sections to show how that water gets around them. And I'll tell you, from a modeling perspective, it was, it was, it's a lot easier, it was easy that people could hide things. It's one of the things, as a modeling reviewer, we look out for the tricks that, that modelers use to get by with stuff. But where we're headed on this 2D, you can't hide, you can't hide anything. And so what we're finding out with the 2D is it's, it's hard to show no impact, so it's actually killing a lot of, a lot of development across kind of the region at this point, or making it more difficult. With enough money, you can model the world and fix it, but it's, it's definitely requiring a lot more mitigation than what was previously considered, so. More ponds and more channels and more things like that is what we're seeing, so.
Cool.
Thank you. I, I have a question on this. I know we've talked a lot about flooding and stuff, but what else does this mapping have on it that people, citizens can go in and look at?
Um, I mean, from a base letter, there's, if somebody has a question about, I mean, they can get it from other county sources, but you know, if they wanna put in their address, they can see, you know, their voting precinct, who their rep is. So that's, this is a spot where you can do that.
Do, do what?
Like you put in your address, and then like, if you click on one of the layers with your address, like this particular layer with the voting precinct, it puts in who you're, basically what district you're in, both on the federal and state side.
What other information does it give about my address, though?
Uh, nothing specific to address. It does have the parcel data, so it has, this is the county's parcel data, so you can click on that and go to the appraisal district's website, but that's really the, the only, the only location-based data on an individual lot is what the appraisal district has.
Only?
Well, this map doesn't get into the type of structure, the, you know, what you have on there besides the aerial, those kind of things. But yes, you know, you can find out, because the county's data has been brought in, you can find out who the owner of that tract is, their address, the value, and so on and so forth.
Can I ask a question, Craig, regarding that? Because I, and a comment just came out, Big Brother, so here's a question. Of that particular layer, if the council chose to, that could be turned off, because I don't know what the real benefit to the, us as a city is, when that also exists already elsewhere.
Yeah, we could, we can, yeah, we can, what we would probably do in that case, if the city wanted to, is we would still have a parcel layer, just so you can see the parcels, but we could strip out the link and anything like that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, we got the experts? Okay, great. Guys, thank you so much for coming and giving us the demo.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item five B, consider and take action to approve advertising for a request for qualification for the City of Simonton comprehensive plan. This would, we'll get on terminology, but essentially go out to bid, so to help us hire the professional that would help us generate our comprehensive plan, since we're ready to move on to phase two.
What's a comprehensive plan mean?
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a second? They can just vote now.
Any discussion? So this would be the point, do you, I don't think we have Joe yet?
No, we don't at this point.
Do you wanna give a sentence about what it is?
Sure, comprehensive plan, currently the City of Simonton does not have planning and zoning, so in order to be able to put planning and zoning into effect, we need to complete, you know, for the state, a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan does a multitude of different things. It does, you know, a lot of short-term and long-term planning when it comes to transportation, mobility, land use, planning and zoning, any ordinance changes. It basically is setting kind of the bare-bones structure for the progression in your city going forward. So we've done the first step in that, which is the strategic planning, that was a two-year process, so now we're migrating into the full comprehensive planning.
And the only thing it affects is anything and not in the ETJ.
So two and a half miles, that's what she's saying, it only affects two and a half miles square meters, us.
Let me put that in a form of question. I'm sorry, I was out of order, sorry. It sounded like there was some confusion. Is that limited to our city limits?
No, it is not.
But we can't zone what's in the ETJ, correct?
No, but with potential growth, the annexation, the possibility of annexation, there are studies that are done for land use planning in the ETJ that affect the city a lot.
But the property that's currently?
So it's about being prepared and writing the outline for what, what should growth look like? What would we like it to be? What, you know?
So will the comp plan include the ETJ? Because according to the ETJ, in order to be annexed, they have to vote themselves to be annexed.
We're not, we're not forcing anybody in by doing the plan, but having a plan, so that we don't deal with one grass fire after another, for lack of a better term. Somebody were to come in and put a business like Darn, I wish we'd reserve that for a park or our new city hall, or making things out of, I don't have a city.
But will this comprehensive plan include the ETJ?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we have to know.
Sorry, council, any further discussion? All in favor in approving advertising for request for qualification? I think we might have just taken to thunder, but thank you for coming.
No, that's fine.
For anybody who hasn't met yet, this is Joe Esch. He is gonna be with us on a second, we're about to move on to another item. Item C is consider and take action to appoint Cody Turner, Stacy Nutty, Jamie Spialas, Thomas McMoran, Kelly Mathula to fill out five board positions for the Economic Development Corporation, EBCA. Y'all, during the public comments, have made some questions or reservations about that. That is appointing council members to fill EBCA. I'll just make a couple of comments and then we'll let the council discuss if they want. I'll just make a couple of comments and we'll let the council discuss if they want to during the motion. Our EDCs have been idle for a couple of years. Several factors. One, we didn't have a director that was following the requirements as well. And we didn't have big projects that were moving forward. So we've changed now the directors. Joe is our new leader on that and going to help us get these boards fired up and interested in figuring out what those projects should be. And helping us again with this planning process. I'll just say that we did a EDC 101, or a reboot if you will, and we had one board member attend, two. Barb and Doug.
And was that announced anywhere?
So we had two out of ten.
Yeah.
That's the vetting chain. It was public and posted and was a great job. We certainly appreciate it, learned a lot. He was here. But one of the reasons that we need to get these boards going is we're going to put the volunteers who have said that they're willing, and whoever is next on B, and then the city council, whether it's temporarily, long-term, or short-term, can act as A. Joe, do you want to give just a small amount? You gave us a couple of notes about why it's not a conflict for council to be acting as EDCA.
Are you putting words in his mouth about why it's not a conflict? Because I think that... Exactly. So let him talk. Don't say what he's going to talk about, like why it's not a conflict. Let him speak.
If I asked you to address something specific, that's all.
So you would say, please address why you feel this is a conflict or non-conflict.
So type A and type B corporations are governed by state law. The appointment of board of directors, there's, there's differences. The board of a 4A of a type A corporation, they're all of its five members. There are not any requirements for how you fill them. Type B has seven members. No more than four of the members of the board can be officers or members of the city council or of the city itself. So there are limitations on the 4B versus 4A. I understand that there have been some concerns expressed about the city council sitting as the board of directors to the board of corporation and that conflict of interest. It's not a conflict of interest for a number of reasons. First, the city council is responsible for both the corporations. You appoint the board of directors for both corporations. They serve at your pleasure. You're responsible for approving their budgets and the projects. It's not something, even though they're independent organizations, they're funds that go to the city or restricted funds. You have you as a city council. If a project, a program, a expenditure is not in, consistent with what you want to see, you don't approve the budget. So the idea that, that there's a conflict of interest doesn't make sense from the start because also it's a public, uh, uh, public meetings. Everything's posted. You can't spend funds unless they're in the budget. You're not going to approve something unless it's consistent with state law. The misuse of funds in both the 4A and 4B are described in state statute. The 4A is also more restrictive than the 4B corporation. The 4B allows for quality of life projects, allows for a broader use of funds. There are also examples out there where a number of cities, one of which in Fort Bend County is Sugar Land, their board of directors for the 4A corporation, Sugar Land 4A corporation, type B corporations are now called, has been a city council for about 15 years. I've been involved in economic development for a little over 30 years now. I've been involved in economic development in Texas and with these corporations since 1999. I've seen and talked to a number of developers, brokers, excuse me, a number of boards, situations, appointments. I understand the concerns. You want to make sure that the funds are being expended properly. Everybody wants that. But if the city council approves the budget, approves the board members, nothing gets spent, what's the difference than you appointing? How, if you're not competent to do that, how are you competent to run the city? If there's a conflict of interest and you're not trustworthy to manage the board of the 4A corporation, how are you trustworthy to run the city? That's a logical disconnect.
I agree.
On top of that, whether you agree or not, the reality of it is, is that the, the 4A corporation and all the expenditures are public records. You're also cleaning things up because things weren't managed properly previously. And that was not the city council. So if you're going to suggest to me, or someone's going to suggest that the idea that it has to be an independent board to preserve the operations of the board, you've already had it where you had an independent board and things were not running properly. So city council, to make sure that you're doing things properly, you're going to follow state law. You have an advice of council. You post agendas. They're open meetings. People can attend. The budgets are available. So it's not a conflict of interest for you to serve as the board of the 4A corporation. You cannot serve as seven members of the 4B corporation, but you can serve as four of them. And that's also not a conflict. There are a number of examples where members of the city council, let's take Rosenberg for example. Their Rosenberg Development Corporation, which is a 4B, not 4A, they have three members. They have the mayor and three members of the board there. It is, it is a public endeavor. The purpose of the corporations is to accomplish a public goal that's set by the city council. They are, like it or not, they are tools in the city to accomplish economic development. It is wonderful to see that people have concerns to ensure that the corporations are being managed properly. But there are controls in place that if you're following, you're consistent with the state law, that you're going to get in trouble if you're not. Those concerns can be alleviated. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I can go on for a long time, but there's just too much in place in statute to be able to, to suggest that in and of itself that there's a conflict. And whether you go to the Secretary of State's website, you go to TML's handbook on economic development, you go to any number of examples out there. Information's there. What can I answer for you?
I would strongly, 100% disagree with that because there are three of these positions that are up for reelection this year in May. And then they would be automatically placing themselves on another board that possibly other electees could be operating. And I don't agree with that. This, they have not shown thus far that they are listening to us in order to operate that system. So now we're going to give them the keys to another car that we own.
Well, first off, they already have that key.
I understand that, but they don't yet.
Well, it doesn't, what you, what, first off, between the two of us, I have 30 years of experience.
Who are you, by the way?
Who am I?
Yeah, because you showed up late and you're supporting the board, but who are you?
First off.
You've got 30 years' experience. First off, who? Who are you? Who are you? You're speaking on behalf of the board, but are you speaking in behalf of the city?
Simonton.
Of Simonton.
So we, we've made an introduction. I'm sorry if you didn't hear it.
No, I heard his name and his position.
So let me answer your question. Since, first off, I have been in economic development for 30 years. I started North Dakota before people thought the state existed. It did exist, they wanted to come to there. I came down here in 1999. I started Sugar Land's economic development department. I ran it for over a decade. I also ran I also ran airport. I had parks and rec, transportation, planning, and I did legislative affairs for the City of Sugar Land.
So what do you plan for Simonton?
If you'll let me finish, I'll be glad to get to that. Right now you...
I would love for you to get to the question.
Well, no, you asked me my background, so that's what I'm going to answer. If you will give people a chance, you might learn something.
Sure, I will.
So on top of that, after I spent three years working with a development company, then I worked with the City of Missouri City running economic development for seven years, and now I work as a consultant with a number of communities. They have hired me to assist them.
As a consultant.
That's correct.
So you're hired by our council.
So are you...
So you're being paid by our council.
Are you telling me your question might integrity?
Are you paying?
Are you, are you questioning my integrity? Are you questioning my integrity?
Yes.
That you, ma'am, I don't...
Yes.
Well, forget integrity. The budget says $123,000 for development. Are you getting $123,000?
Joe, thank you very much for the explanation.
I apologize.
I apologize.
Council, do we have a motion? On item C?
I don't know.
So the other thing is, once you're...
She's already asking.
Do we have a second? Do we have further motion?
I made the motion.
So they're appointing themselves?
We have a second. Is there any further discussion?
Again, I'm sure that was meant to end.
That's why I don't want to be here.
Well, I, I had a thought on my part that this all happened, but what I would like to propose is we fill the seats because they need to be filled and this, this needs to get rolling. We're always taking applications. If you'd like to serve, come talk to us. And that is the whole point, that is the whole purpose of the EDCA, B, both of them. But there's a need and we're filling it. That was, that's the whole purpose of this.
And when were we known, notified of the, of the need? Specifically, was that at the Miss December meeting or the Miss November meeting? Because we weren't notified.
There was a meeting in November, but here's your notification.
EDCs have been discussed in multiple meetings last year, and particularly when we talked about reactivating them and engaging.
I'm, I'm certain they have been discussed, but it was not with appointing yourselves, again, to be re-elected this year.
That was never on the docket.
That was never on the docket. It was never on the docket. Y'all were busy doing budgets and everything else prior to doing the things in line that the way that we're supposed to be done. But it, it just goes back to the same narrative.
We should beg for volunteers instead of just voting things.
It's on the docket.
Let's not argue all the way through the meeting. Talk about it if you have a concern. I make note.
We're trying to make note on record in a meeting that's being recorded that it was never on a docket.
Ladies, both of you need to understand, this is temporary. This is just to fill the spots so we can get meetings going and going. If you call us tomorrow and say we want to fill out an application to be a volunteer, we won't consider that as a board.
That's what you're voting on now. Why can we not do that right now?
Because we need to get going. We can't wait for everyone to come.
So we have to call you tomorrow to nominate ourselves? We can't do it right now?
You've got to fill out an application and send in your...
We can nominate ourselves right now?
No, you can't. It's okay, we've got the city council.
Wait, because lawyers here. Can we nominate ourselves right now?
Mayor, do you want me to answer that question?
Sure.
Okay, here's a couple of things. First, there was a comment raised about comment raised about if you're appointing, the council right now, all five are appointing themselves to be on the 4A, which they can do. That doesn't mean that they're there currently. The council holds the power at any time to remove anybody from the EDC board. That applies to A and B. And so even if these five were to do that, and you've mentioned that, and I haven't called the elections here, but if there's three, you know, members of council were to come on that were new, those three, again, would have the majority. They could vote everyone off and then get a whole new EDC board. That could happen for both A and the B. So, so that's why this, it's proper to say this is temporary. Whether or not these five stay on or not, it's still, it's temporary because it's, any single meeting, the EDC, the council could vote off and clear out an EDC board. So that, that's, that's the standing of the thing. As far as you can nominate yourself, because the process is you have to put an application to the city, that gets to the council, they'll put an agenda item on an agenda, and then they'll, they'll consider putting people on the, on the EDC board, just like they're doing tonight. So I think that's why the suggestion to you all has been, if you, anybody that wants to be a member of any board, then fill out an application, get that to the council, make it an agenda item, and then they'll, they'll vote on it.
Before I would nominate myself, you know, I always want to know, when was it decided that we need an economic development council?
All EDCs?
And does it have a definition and a mission statement or anything? How can I nominate myself to serve them something that I don't even know what it is?
So those documents are probably more than likely available from the City of Donald Wett's site.
I'm making that mine.
And so, and so that's what we've got right there.
When was it decided?
2009. The voters voted it in in 2009.
2009?
A little more clarification. So to board votes when you nominate yourself, if they accept you?
Yes.
Yeah, so they'll take a vote.
That's they don't like me. I'm out.
Well, I mean, so, so so I'm going to say the example from another city that, that I've worked in, that so there, that city is a, is a type B corporation. So like Mr. Esch said, it's a seven-member board. Of that, it's a type A city like you are here. So there's five members of council, seven members of the EDC board. Four members of the, of the, of the city council were on the EDC board. So it's a majority either way you go.
Right.
We got two new, two new council members in. The city council, so that's three. So they need three votes, but they did, and they had that. And they cleared the whole EDC board out and put a whole new people in, seven new people in. And so, yeah, so you're right. At any time, no matter what, it can be cleared out.
And both TML, Texas Municipal League, if you look at their economic development handbook, which you can search, or the city, or the state of Texas Secretary, had, and the comptroller, have links that have all this information.
Right, but how do you, having people on our city council, on our EDC boards, on our HOA boards, on our POA boards, on our beautification boards, in all household facilities of these five people that are sitting up here, how does that not a conflict of interest?
So, so legal answer on that, I mean, besides just the, the principle of the thing, when you're an EDC board member, you are not, by statute, you are not a public official. And so when you're, so they're acting as public officials here. When you're on the EDC board, you're acting in the public interest, but you're not a public official. So you're, so your decision, even if it's a full council that would do that, like in this case, then it's, the decision made, that's not a council decision, it's an EDC board decision. It's a separate, distinct role legally than it is from the council.
But it's the same people making the same decisions.
I, I know.
I'm not arguing. It's the same folks.
And focus on primary sector jobs.
So to bring in income.
Yes, the promotion. Whereas the 4B corporation can do more quality of life projects. And, and for example, I used Sugar Land earlier, so I'll, I'll use them. Their 4B corporation, they build parks with it, the city then funds the operations. They, they do quality of life initiatives. They participate in, in a broader 4A typically.
But that's the B.
The B, the 4A typically does industrial type of projects, business, things that create primary sector jobs. That's more in their focus. If they do a, a project, they, the difference is the 4B requires to do a public hearing to get type of funding. It's different than 4A, but they have, they're restricted. If you want to expand the use beyond what's allowed legislatively, you have to go to the vote of the public. A question was asked earlier, how are these created? They were created through a vote of the public. And that authorization lists if there's any expansion of the, of the tools that they could, could utilize. As to your earlier question about, well, you get a new batch of people, they, in, in election, yes, it can translate, it could, could change because you have a new batch of people here. That could change at any time regardless of whether it was city council or not. My point is not that you're not concerned. My point is that they have the ability, this responsibility for the administration of the corporations, regardless or not if you have a board, wrestle these people. That's not a question of integrity. That's a question of fact.
It's not a question of your integrity.
No, not yours.
But ma'am, but ma'am, if you, if you don't like the process of participating.
Understand, we are trying.
Here.
But participate.
We are here.
That's why we're here. You were not here earlier in our defense to understand the fact that we have not been heard in the past six to seven, eight months now over the course of time when we realized that all of this was a problem. And now we are trying to be heard, yet votes like these continue every single meeting we have.
And then they're working emphatically.
And we never hear anything else about it. It's just businesses.
We have a responsibility to manage and run the city, just like those two ladies do. And all of the things that are on our agendas every time we need. We get documents, we get background. It, it's not a foregone conclusion that we're all going to vote the same way because we can't talk about it because that would be a walking quorum. That's against the law. We don't do that. But Erica sends out information to us. We formulate our, our views. We call, we talk. So yes, when you come here, we have already educated ourselves because that's our job.
But it's your job to educate me.
No, it's not.
It is, yes ma'am, 100% it's your job to educate me.
No, it's not.
I do appreciate Cody Turner. I do appreciate you discussing the possibility of nominating other people to the board. Is that something that we can do?
We cannot manage sustaining with the ongoing outbursts. We want to be serious, but be rating, be holding guests, being inappropriate and outbursts, we've got to stop doing that. We're a small town. We're not going to be as formal as what the City of Houston. But let's be respectful to each other, and we darn sure don't need to sit and insult people who are here to help us and educate us. Definitely take a deep breath about this. Can you have a question about?
Yeah, just the application. Because I, I, if I see a need, I'm willing to help.
What are the qualifications?
What are the qualifications? What do you, what is the process?
Forms and applications.
Forms on the webpage. Basically, we need to live here. It's very simple. It's sort of a qualify. I don't have the form in front of me. I'm a state, but honestly.
I've got a laugh out of Cody.
Living the city limits. You're willing to serve. Going to be pretty much the necessary element.
You got me? You got me?
Sarah, if you, if you want to put out an application and be serious about it, I have no problem with that at all.
Awesome.
We're going to have to have some meetings lessons.
Okay. We have a motion.
There's a question.
Just one question. I just want, since we're new, I just wanted to know still, we don't vote to put anybody on the EDC. We just vote for y'all, right?
Exactly. And you apply to be on board. And you apply?
Oh.
So you can volunteer. But yes, that is how it works. Okay. Everybody else? We have a motion and a second. We have to strike that. For I and C to consider and take action to report the members for EDC A. On the table.
Aye.
No opposed. All right. I thought this next item was going to be the hottest topic of the night. But I see I was wrong so far. Last item in new business is discuss and review waste collection services contract with Texas Pride. Kevin Atkins isn't here. We thought he might be coming tonight, but we're going to go ahead and meet him.
I'm here in this place.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. I didn't realize that. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Rose Losantos. I am the safety and risk manager for Texas Pride Disposal. And I'm here to represent Kevin because he had other obligations to mind. Have you had to answer any questions or anything you guys may have come?
Great, thank you. So, a little bit, you may have it if you'd like to give sort of the history of why, but the city decided to consolidate down to one provider years ago because we had up to seven or eight different providers in neighborhood and, and in the city every single week. So, there were trash trucks running in Valley Lodge and in the city of Simonton almost every single day. Our road conditions, as you know, and this was prior to the sixteen and seventeen floods, so our road conditions have always been a challenge and us being able to afford to maintain them. We've, we've never had the budget to maintain them at the level that we all wish that we could. So, one of the decisions at that time, my council seated then, was to consolidate down to one provider. That worked really well. Got lots of that truck traffic, traffic off, and the service was great for years and years. And I think that there are some people that are happy today. There are some people that are less than today. And we want to hear you. If anybody has a comment one way or another, we want to collect that. Council brought this to forward and it was actually Thomas McComore, who can't be here tonight, who said, "Let's take this up and have a look at what our service is now. What other options are there if we need to make a change and talk to the public and find out how much dissent is there? What is the actual problem?" And kind of enlist everyone's help. If you have an issue, to email and/or call Texas Pride and do it every single week. I know, I've had comments from a number of folks that I do it and they don't respond, or I do it and I'm still waiting. I'm not going to speak to that since that's not my thing to manage. But what I would say is, if it's Erica and Jennifer and I and three residents who email, they, it doesn't look like it's big of an issue if we're just under three hundred households being served plus our commercial. Because it does if, are there really twenty-five people that were affected? Was it a hundred people that were affected? It's hard to see. So, I would ask everybody, every week if you have an issue, let's email to the Simonton address. I'm sorry, please tell me again what it is.
Simonton and Texas Pride Disposal.
Simonton and Texas Pride Disposal dot com. You can also let us know about it. I'm kind of going to my comment for the end, but I don't want anybody to lose track of. Please continue to reach out if you need something from them. And let's let them have the opportunity to make your fight. Having said that. Maybe show of hands, how many folks are having trouble with their services? Since we have a representative here to understand you. So, we've got commercial and residential. Rachel, is yours commercial? Okay. Commercial and residential being represented. We have received comments like, "My trash hasn't been picked up for three weeks." "My stickers aren't here. Am I going to get my trash picked up because I'm not sure what's going on with the sticker thing?" "When I call, I don't get a call back. When I speak to somebody and they say, 'We missed you today, but we're going to pick you up tomorrow,' then they don't come." Now, I also get comments like, "I really appreciate that Texas Pride sends me an email that they're not going to be here today." "I appreciate the Texas Pride case of heavy trash every single week. If I have a big thing, I can put that out there and it's included." So, both sides, I would love it if you wanted to give your form of review or what you need.
So, I, I'll, I'll address the sticker situation. I will say that the printing company that has committed to get us the stickers on time to then forward on to the residents has not worked out as well as we wanted it to. So, we are picking everybody up regardless of whether you have the sticker or not. Until we get that corrected, we're going to continue to pick everybody up whether you have the sticker or not. As far as, I kind of want to understand the email address that's at Simonton. Does that then get forwarded to Texas Pride?
I don't know if that was given to us.
It's a Texas Pride email address. Oh, so it's a Texas, oh, that's right, because it is a Texas Pride.
I think it's a lot like Alvin.
I will have to find out who is receiving, because there's got to be one person. It's Mariah? Okay.
But the problem is, is that when people do email, there's no response. And I personally email on behalf when people call. I have emailed on behalf of residents calling saying, okay, you know, this address has not been picked up, a lot of, and there's, there's just never any response. So, I can understand the frustration of residents that even if we're calling and emailing and we're not getting a response, that the frustration is growing from the public.
I will definitely address that with the customer service manager. Maybe someone else has to be the point person for Simonton.
And honestly, to be in full transparency, the only time we really ever, Lori, Erica, or I ever get a response is if we call or text Kevin directly.
Yeah.
Kevin is great at responding, but it's the people underneath him that he delegates the tasks to achieve that are not completing the task. And the frustration is just continuing to grow.
Okay.
I think people have to be careful what they wish for. I've lived out here for forty years and Texas Pride's the best service we've ever had.
Best service. Best.
Oh, Jesus.
There's always going to be some problems because running a business like that with labor. You just better be careful what you wish for.
It, it, it is challenging. It is very, very challenging after holidays. And not just the holiday, then we had the freeze. If I could show you photos of the amount of bags that people took out because of the freeze and the holidays, there's drivers that walk up and send us photos of over forty bags.
Oh, my gosh.
Insulation or flooded insulation or just. Or just anything that's, that, that, you know, we've had a pretty house pretty much put out in front and they expect us to pick it up. And this is when we get bad press because, no, we're not going to pick that up. We can't. We've got eight bag total that we're going to go ahead and pick up, and that's what we're going to pick up. And this is when we start getting the bad press of, well, you're not servicing us.
I don't think, I think we all appreciate you here. I, I genuinely do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I really do. I think I'm wondering why we're not getting an email. Like, it'll be a day late.
I do.
I do.
Some do and some don't. I don't know.
You have to register and if it's not coming to you, because I am going to have this conversation with Donna, who is our customer service manager.
We're going to text you.
To make sure. One of the things that Kevin mentioned to me, and I know this is a place to bring it up, but we service Wallace on Thursdays and then we service you guys on Wednesdays. They're wanting to see if we can move Simonton to Thursday.
We did. We changed it last week effective immediately.
Oh, really?
So, it is a done deal. He wanted to make sure that it was good to go so that we could do that.
Where'd that come from?
We posted it on Facebook last week.
So, we.
Go from Wednesday to Thursday.
Hey, so, one thing is.
So, if we didn't show up tonight, we wouldn't know that.
No, it was on Facebook.
Nobody.
Facebook doesn't count.
Folks, folks. The city is, wants to do everything we possibly can to be the conduit for information.
What's?
But the city does not manage that. We don't know when they're going to be late. We don't, I mean. If I could ask something right now, I would say, it sure would be great if we could have an email from Texas Pride directly to the customer saying, "In fact, at this date, we're going to change you to Thursday." Sounds like internal communication there. Maybe they didn't know that that was final.
Hold off and do it so that we do know when we're going to hold.
Well, to be honest, the only reason we found out is because I called Kevin on Thursday and said, "We were not picked up on Wednesday." And he said, "Oh, we've decided to change to today because that's the same day as we start the flawless." So, as soon as we figured out about that, we posted it out, but, I mean, really at the end of the day, yes, I mean, it's Texas Pride's responsibility to communicate that to the customers.
Where did you post it to?
Erica posted it on.
Everybody's garbage is out right now on our street.
Or ready for tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. And by the way, for the last six weeks, you haven't picked, you've picked it up on Thursday instead of Wednesday, but everybody still puts it out on Tuesday.
Yeah.
And that's, I don't know if it's that way for everybody, but it is on Barnes Road.
Yeah.
They have to pick it up on Thursday.
They're afraid they're going to open Wallace. That's what they're doing at the salon, which is fine. Remember I said, "I don't mind the trash for thirty days with old companies."
Two days. So, do we go ahead and go to the Thursday or would you want to?
I think at this point I'd like confirmation.
Right. We were told, yeah. It wasn't a question. Either one of us. It's like, I mean, it wasn't like a, hey, do you want to switch? It was a, we decided and so.
And you are.
Jennifer and Erica.
And her.
So, if you, if, if Texas Pride, I'm sorry, one second. If Texas Pride could, y'all could have that internal discussion and then verify back for us?
Definitely.
That'd be great. I'll let you know personally tomorrow morning once I talk to Kevin.
And then I would also appreciate if y'all, if you could send me some sort of memo that we could Nixle out to everybody reminding them that if you're not receiving Texas Pride emails, because I think a lot of people here get, get frustrated and they get angry at Erica and I, and they yell at us for your trash not being picked up. I don't work for Texas Pride. We have a contract with them and we hold them accountable to the terms of the contract. And then their contract is to communicate with the customer. And so, if you could send us something that we could then push out about reminding our customers, if you're not getting a Texas Pride email, this is how you need to verify your account or to get that.
I'm going to find that out and find out how it is.
And we'd be more than happy to push, to push that out on your behalf, but we're not going to be here also pushing Eric, you know, council.
All the emails, yeah.
Right, saying, you know, I mean, we spend a lot of time every single week sending in addresses if a person hasn't been picked up, you know. You know, it, it's, it's very time consuming on our part and, you know, that's, you guys manage the utility side of it.
And you should know Mariah, right?
Yes. Mariah Roberts.
Mr. Williams, did you say anything else about that?
I'd like to say one thing. Let me stand up and be real clear.
The way it looks right now, it looks like you scheduled it for Thursday.
You know, I thought that the city of Simonton website was the official thing. And that's where I went and did all my checking before this meeting to try to inform myself. And like I said, the emails that I get occasionally are helpful. And then in this meeting, I hear all this stuff about Facebook and Instagram was mentioned. Now, you know, what's it going to be? What's the real deal? Am I supposed to go to Facebook and look up this stuff or Instagram? She mentioned, somebody mentioned Instagram.
I did.
And, you know, to me, what, what, what's it going to be? And, and if we're going to do it all on Facebook, why do we have to fund and pay for maintaining a website?
We're not going to do it all on social.
And this is just a really fair question, a really fair comment.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And what's the answer?
So, we're using multiple platforms because people would like to receive information in more than one way.
But we weren't told that there was a Facebook page even.
Soon as you have confirmation from Texas Pride that the change is official, we just offered that we would send it out by Nixle so that you'll get an email from the city's Nixle account. And then hopefully you should also get something directly from Texas Pride, but we'll direct you to be able to.
Well, I was just asking about Texas Pride. I was just thinking, as a general rule, are we to go to the Simonton website or to Facebook?
Our official communication is through the website, but we try to supplement it through the Facebook.
But if I go to the website, then tell me also go look at Facebook. I didn't even know there was a Facebook site. How many people knew there was a Simonton Facebook?
You're going to get everything.
Raise your hand.
There's, there's like three or four.
No, there's the real official Simonton website.
But we were never told about it.
Mr. Williams, the social media is supplemental.
But yeah, it was not the website.
Is the website? And we will be sure and try to send some more Nixle information out that comes by email or through two things.
I think the Nixle is a very.
I still don't know whether when I go home tonight, do I put my trash out?
I don't either.
I, I would say let's, let's count on Thursday being the service day.
So, what happens if, if it comes in by tomorrow?
I'm just leaving. They did get it Thursday, but they got my recycling.
I do think that one of, one of the biggest problems of, of Texas Pride is customer service.
Yeah, well, well noted. I, I.
Yeah. I mean, I had, I had a horrible problem for a very long time. I could not get them to send me a bill. I know that's a horrible problem. But I mean, I worked at it very hard. Phone calls, letters, never could get them. Finally, I came up with the brilliant idea of signing up as a new customer, which I did. And after I completed all that, I received an email of confirmation. But I also received another one that said, "We are so sorry that we do not service your area." I just think you guys would have a much better image if you would totally revamp your customer service.
I hear you. I hear you.
Because when we first moved in a year ago, we're new, and I love your trash cans. I don't know, I don't care if they're like, just they're, they're super sweet. But we moved in and we set up our account. The lady told me the same thing, that you didn't service Simonton. And I was like, oh, well, that's who the people told me to call.
I am so sorry.
So, I served, I, I signed up. She finally just put me in. They came for like a month. And then they didn't come. Then I called, I called and there was no response. And so, I literally ran your trash guys down. I looked crazy. Y'all saw me that. Uh, yeah, because I wanted answers because nobody answered the phone or email. And they said, "Well, you're canceled because you haven't paid." I said, "Just moved in. I didn't got a bill." They couldn't even find me. And I called, somebody answered. They made me pay the previous owner's bill before they would come and pick up my trash.
What?
What?
I, I promise you. We have, we've been here a year.
If I could take your advice before.
Yes, because they told me the only way I would get the trash service is because you go buy houses by accounts. And so, we had to pay the previous owner's bill in order for my trash.
If I could take your advice before, everybody would be happy to address the issue.
I have no issues.
Don't feel bad because I called about our dumpster one day. We cleaned out my stuff and filled dumpster, and I called and they come pick our dumpster. They told us they didn't service our area. So, and we were calling from City Hall.
I didn't say like pay the empty these other bill. I was like, oh, okay.
What I've noticed the last couple of weeks is that they're still picking up recycling on Wednesday.
Yes.
So, is that going to stay on Wednesday or is it going to move to Thursday?
It should move to Thursday as well. If we're going to be out here on Thursday, we may as well do it on Thursday. Yes. Yes, my recycle's gone on Wednesday. The last.
Now I see why your boss is in there.
No, he's one of them. We love Kevin. I love Kevin.
Okay, so, I'm going to go against everybody else, but my situation's a little different. I have a lot of kids. I have a very large family. And so, when trash is late, it becomes an issue. And I had a special needs son, so there would be medical stuff that needed to go. And, you know, now it's, it's, that's not even the issue. It's the combination of the customer service. Because they are actually throwing my trash cans away and I was told to prove it. So, I put a camera out and I took, I got another trash can, oh, um, that I purchased. It's not a, and I videotaped them throwing it away. And I sent it. This, we've been going back for, since October. And the trash cans are a hundred and twenty. The last time I just put out the round water barrels because I'm like, throw that away, you know. I know. And it's, it's expensive. And it happened consecutively, like.
That's surprising because to be quite honest with you, I should receive all emails for any kind of damages or any kind of replacements, although she.
Honestly, I think I talked to you.
To make.
Yes, because it was on a cell phone.
Because when I, when I get one of those complaints, I would go to our campus because our trucks are equipped with four cameras. One in front, one on each side and one in the rear. By the time I receive something and seven days has passed, I can no longer go back into the camera because of course, just like all cameras, it records it over after seven days. If I don't have that proof to show that it was us that took it, then that's what I'm hired for, the risk manager, to mitigate our costs. And if I don't have anything other than.
I, I sent it. I sent it. I can download them and I sent them. Jennifer Vincent, Six Love a Pony. Jennifer Vincent, six love a pony, and honestly, yeah, this has been, my kids are weird, they put weird stuff in the trash, but it's still...
I will look at it, I will write that out.
Is the recycle stuff really getting recycled?
Most definitely.
And is there any consideration ever, any thought about giving us a bigger container? Because the little bins are just, you can't get very much in them. And we have a separate barrel that, when we, Texas Pride first came, they gave us a green sticker to put on it that said recycle, and I tried to get some additional green stickers, but they told me the guy on the truck had them, and I asked him, and he didn't have them, and...
Of course, the size of the bin, I think that's contractual, depending on what the city of Symington chose to use for recycling, because there's various communities, because do you have the one that looks like a...
We have this red container.
Yeah, because we do have communities that we, we use the ninety-six gallon for trash, and then like a sixty-five gallon for recycling, and that would be like a tote apart. There is a larger size, but I'm sure that's something that would have to change contractually, if that's what the city chose to do.
The customer can arbitrarily offer that?
I think, I don't, I think in our contract you can, so we went with the smaller, or this is the standard recycling, this is included in the contract, like it's not, they're not charging the customer anything for that recycling, then it's just a part of the contract. Yeah, I think if you call, but it's, you can upgrade it, it's at your expense, just like if you lose a trash can or something, you can replace it, but it's at your expense, like each household is getting one or two, so, I think you can call them and ask them, because I know we do have something, Kirsty, we have...
Oh, I can comment. I have, I'll give you all a phrase. I have two big blue ones that I got on Facebook Buy, Sell, Trade, because somebody in the community didn't recycle, and I bought them, and they're this big, because I recycle in my salon and my house, and they've never damaged them.
Thank you, they are like, we started Texas Pride Service, they're in good condition, they take care of my recycling.
So, are you asking that if they want to go with something larger, that you can call in and request something, but it would be at your expense, depending on the size that we brought out? And he can put a sticker on it. The new part, because the color of the lid will be different on the recycling one.
And Jennifer, I think that might be why they were throwing yours away, is because it wasn't a Texas Pride identified trash can.
And it probably wasn't.
So, they might have thought it was trash.
I'm not paying $35 over and over again.
Right, and I get that. So, that might have been, I mean, not anybody's defense, but...
I understand.
Because they've gone to identifiable...
Why would they throw it away?
They don't provide eight trash cans, right? It's eight at a time? Eight in one pickup, is the max?
Bags?
No, trash cans.
Oh, no, 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 that's bags, no trash cans, we do the cart service.
So, we have a non-cart, like, one is yours, one is not, one is ours, but how many do you pick up that are yours? One?
Those are ours, yes. But I don't know what the con, because I don't know this... They have a bag in the contract, and they should have looked at it before coming out here.
We have it.
But I don't know.
I'll get to know.
Yeah, to see what the limit is. I think we pick up, if you have it out, we pick it up.
Yeah, my neighbors have six, they have six kids.
They also take heavy trash. It just has to be like, if your trash can is full, it's just a bag, and they'll pick up the bags, like, we've never had an issue with...
Yeah, I was just trying to...
Yeah.
So, I just, it dawns on me why I lost the trash can. We had two auxiliary trash cans from, that we bought to pack stuff in for a hurricane that was coming, and occasionally, we would have overflow, we would use them, and I'd, one of them disappeared, and I guess y'all stuck it.
I don't know, I don't know.
It was amazing, because you left the other one. So, the point, the bottom line for me is, you don't allow us to use auxiliary trash cans.
I used one.
I used one all the time, and they never pick it up.
I don't think that's a problem.
That's not a problem. Okay, thank you. So, a bad guy stole my can.
Well, I thought the sticker, the green sticker, the big one they gave us originally, that you could put on your own can that said recycle, was a really good idea, but do they still have those stickers?
We still have recycle stickers, yeah.
How do you get them? A call and...
I'm gonna say to call it in, but if you give me your address, if you want one, I can send you one.
Good, I'm grabbing it.
Yeah, we used to have two.
Thanks, everybody.
I thought somebody stole them.
I have.
And for those who want recycling stickers, we're gonna have her bring some to City Council, and we'll put them in the office, so you can come in and you can sign out for a sticker, and you can put it on your recycling can. That way they're not having to spin them out, she's just gonna bring us a whole bunch of them here, leave the office.
I would like to offer to any folks here, if you're, if you have an interest in understanding how the corporations work, I'm not here to tell you what you want to hear, I'm not here to tell them what they want to hear. I focus on facts. My reputation is based off of my ability to be factual and honest, my integrity is perfect. If I'm not, then I lose my business. So, I'm happy to put on a session for anybody here to go over basic economic development, to go through how the corporations function, and go into details. What I tell you will be referenced in code, it will be supported. Now, you can disagree upon who needs to be implemented, but what I'm gonna tell you is gonna be factual, and I'm happy to go through and answer any of your questions. Folks, I've been in this county now for over twenty years. This is where my home is. I'm gonna tell you what the truth is, I'm interested in growing this community, this area, I now live in Weston Lace, I'm not too far from this area. Do things, but do it correctly. If you have questions, I'll answer them, but if you want to argue, make sure you have a good factual basis, and that's what I'm saying, but I will give you the facts. And I'm happy to do that for any folks and for the city, because I don't, I don't, I don't want you questioning my integrity, I came late because I came for another meeting.
You were not questioning her, you're good.
But you did tell me you did.
You are good.
But if you need information...
You are hired by the city, I will take you up on that, let's do a session.
I will be happy to do that.
Let's do a session, you and me.
I'll do it for everybody, and go through, and we'll go through, answer questions, okay?
Separate meeting.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Here, separate meeting in this one.
I'll give you a little bit, but it's gonna take hours, I'm sorry, it's gonna take hours, it's a lot of information.
Can it help to not see economic development? We don't want growth.
Well, here's what I'm telling you.
Everyone, thank you regarding trash. Thank you very much for coming on behalf of Texas Pride.
Thank you, appreciate you so much.
I think everybody got questions to answer tonight.
I hope we did.
What was it about that?
I come from a really, really extensive background in the trash business, I started when I was nineteen, and this is my thirty-eighth year.
Wow.
It's a tough world.
It is, do it.
Thank you. All right, appreciate you so much. You all have a great evening.
Thank you.
I would have liked everybody to, I'm just gonna add a couple more pieces of information, these are not actionable at this point, we'll gather information, starting with everybody giving their feedback, but Thomas kicked off the ball, and Ms. Erica continued it, we just did some basic reaching out to see what are comparable available services are out there, are there services that are willing to come? There are factors like companies that don't want to service an area of less than a thousand customers, or they're not geographically located near us, we got one company, Best Trash, that probably everybody's seen, but somewhere around town, they're not.
They'd be part of...
Yeah, they're not willing to consider our area because we're too small, so, that's fine, we don't need them, but we are taking a look and have been, it looks like there are comparable prices. Texas Pride still is the least expensive by probably seven to ten dollars a month. They take bulk, they can wind down a lead, and they have recycling, various and different factors about that. We haven't done anything official about it, we've just sort of reached out to see what are our options out there. You're still under contract with Texas Pride, we have completed three years of a five-year contract. There, there is a way to end that contract earlier, if we were to decide we needed to make that change, that would be down the road, you know, not tonight, is what I mean by that, it could be next meeting, if we wanted to make some sort of action on that. But we have already issued today a letter of deficiency to Texas Pride, which is part of our contract, they have thirty days to correct their service, and the items that are specific in the contract that they're deficient in. So, we've taken that action, if they correct it, then nothing further needs to happen. If they don't, then council can make a decision about whether or not to do forward with the change, or give notice of our intention to change services with them at our next council meeting. So, at what I... Anybody further comment, any council or questions? Moving on, I'm six, reports. I just have a few things. First of all, special thank you to Erica for really taking us through the last six weeks of the year. While Ms. Jennifer was out on medical leave, Erica carried this office, she covered more than just her normal desk, which is already very full all the time. Welcome back, Ms. Jennifer, and thank you very much for all of what you did while you were out on leave by remote, you certainly appreciated it when you were at such a big recovery time, so thank you for that. Julie was here, I would ask everybody to say thank you to her as well, she stepped up and covered some extra hours here and there, so that Erica can be doing, be more of a background work. She's covering the window and helping everybody at customer service while she's working on financials for us, so, if you see Ms. Julie when you come by, tell her you're hi and thank you, she is definitely an asset. You might have noticed when you came, if it wasn't already dark, that we had to replace the fence on this east side of the building when we had the windstorm in end of October, early November, that fence finally gave way. We knew that it was in need of a little bit of repair maybe, we didn't know how expensive it was, so, we collected bids for three weeks, we looked at different repair options, and there was just no saving it. So, we replaced that and shifted the cost of that sixty-fourty with our neighbor at the photo studio, so, we spent three thousand and ten dollars was our portion of that, and it's fixed, and it's got a bump out around that tree, so the tree won't impact it for several years to come, hopefully, so if you haven't seen it, it's a nice job. I mentioned about our social media, we didn't quite work out, but we've learned a lot about that, and I might have mentioned last month, or last meeting, I can't remember it, but the erosion project on the Brazos River is not managed by us, but funding has been identified for that, and that's federal funding through HGAC, it's, I'm gonna say, a complicated process, but it's already moving, and we could see action on that within a year to a year and a half. So, that is very exciting, because that would be some mitigation that'll happen in the north side of that curve, where the floodwater eventually would come right through Valley Lodge in Section One, and cut off that boot, the hill section back up to the west, so, that is an exciting thing that people, we've worked on and wanted for decades, and it's going to come to fruition.
And Mayor, we're working with HGAC to kind of be able to update a presentation on that, so hopefully, we couldn't get dates to work out in December with everything, but hopefully here shortly, we'll get them back out.
Fantastic, thank you for it. So, that'll be an open meeting, everybody can come and see, there's an excellent presentation about it we got last time.
What does that mean? Is that supposed to redirect the flow of the river away from Valley Lodge? Is that what you're saying?
It's a fortification, if you will, you should probably give an explanation, so it's more technical.
So, basically, what's been identified, the county did a study a couple of years ago that identified thirteen sites across the county that needed erosion protection, and the first site is basically hardening this bend, here, if you can see the mouse, the Valley Lodge, so the south bend of the river here, as well as this north bend of the river here, so, the county's gotten funding for all of the, the, the pool of money that HGAC is using to fund this project is a pool of money that came after essentially Harvey, essentially, the county is leading the charge on some of the erosion projects. Because of its connection to Austin and implications to both counties, HGAC has picked up this specific project to lead themselves, and partnership with the city and the county, basically because of its multi-county connection. So, what was found and what made this site critical, if you're one of the residents in Section One, it's critical because you want to keep your home, from a floodplain hydraulic standpoint, it dramatically increased the water surface elevations downstream of Valley Lodge, that connection, it doesn't seem like it, but that several mile bend of the river really slows down that water enough, that if we cut it out, it would speed that water up, it would increase erosion downstream, increase water surface, so that's why this site was kind of picked as a critical, and that's again, another reason why HGAC's picked it up to fund it as their specific project to lead.
So, maybe, maybe what you're asking is, what would that be?
Oh, it's a, it's basically...
A wall?
It's basically a big, it's a big rock, it's a big rock structure, and by rock, it's not, it's not small rock like this, it's, it's huge boulders that they're gonna harden the toe with. It's actually a structure that allows for some failure to occur, and the rock falls, and locks and placey divorce, so, it's to prevent future erosion, but it's, it's big boulders. If you drive, they haven't started the project yet, but they'll probably start the project in a couple of months, very similar erosion protection that LID seven, which is new territory, is doing on their north, their north bank, it's very similar to what the Toll Road Authority has kind of looked at, but LID seven, and then TechDOT's looking at the same approach at the fifty-nine U-turn there, the Brazos River that's been closed now for years. Yeah, and down there by season book, so, but it's a, it's gonna be a fun project, it's gonna be a fun project to watch, because it's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting area of the river to get to, without having to go through all the residential streets, so, the sequencing and phasing is gonna be something.
What's HGAC?
So, it's the Harris-Gobson Area Council, it's the area of government, so it's a lot of the counties around here participate in cities, so it's just a multi-council, multi-county organization that focuses on transportation, mobility, land use, flooding, they've got a flood committee that I, that I sit on, thanks to the Portland County's appointment, and so, it just tries to consolidate and have a regional approach, which has not always worked out in all aspects of having Harris County in the city, the table, but it's, it's working much better than it was ten years ago.
Ms. Erica, do you have anything in reports?
The only thing I have to mention is that, as was mentioned earlier, we have a May sixth election coming up, we have three at-large council positions opening, or up for election, and applications for filing opens tomorrow, applications are available here, they are also on our website, so they can be emailed to us or dropped off.
Ms. Jennifer?
The only thing I have is Sarah, Faith, some of y'all that spoke about communication and some transparency, I know as far as me, I've been in government for a very long time. Every time somebody new comes to council, and they give a public comment, or they come to a hearing, or they come to the TCEQ hearing, I always handwrite a thank you letter to each of you. And I thank you for coming to city council and speaking, but I also close every letter that I send with, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me. From August to November, I send out over two hundred handwritten letters to residents that have volunteered, come to city council, come to the TCEQ, have helped the city. I had one person reach out to me and ask for questions, that was Kelly Matula, and she set up an appointment thing, I spent five hours with her, going over questions that she had. I don't think anybody in this room, whether it's council, it's Erica, it's me, shoot, Lou, I mean, anybody who's been involved in the city, has a problem going over things that are in the budget, transparency with the city, but I also want to remind you that when you handle it and you approach it with respect, you get a lot further down the line of having a good, healthy, working relationship with city staff and city council. Unfortunately, that has not happened over the past couple of months. We're a staff of thirty, we work a lot of hours, we, we, yeah, really, two and a half, we work seven days a week. I had major back surgery, I was in the hospital for six days, I was responding to emails in my hospital room. I had major back surgery. I was in the hospital for six days. I was responding to emails in my hospital room. I was responding to reports, open record requests, all kinds of stuff. No staff should ever have to do that. And when it's not received immediately, you're slandered, you're harassed, things are said about you, you are...
Integrity is in question.
Your integrity is questioned. So I'm just saying this in that the communication is there. We can always be better at it. We can always do more things, and we are trying. But out of all of those, let me remind you, out of over 200 handwritten letters that I sent out saying, give me a call if you have a question, I'd love to answer these questions, I had one. One person responded to that. So Sarah, if you have questions, Faith, if you have questions, please email me, call me, come by city hall. I'd love to sit down and ask you questions.
I apologize that you feel slandered. I've never slandered you, nor has Faith.
I, I didn't, I didn't say names in any of that.
You just said that. I thought was the...
No.
Saying in general.
No, I'm not like, you're like directing that. I was like, we're not slandering you.
And I'm not just saying it just for me. I mean, I think all of council, and, and what I like to remind people is, everybody on council has a full-time job, and they do this as a volun, as a volunteer position. And there's a lot of research, and I think independent study that goes into everybody, because it's on council, trying to make the best decisions. And so I'm just, as a personal comment to the public, I'm saying, don't completely shun us and say that we're not trying to communicate with the public, because we are. But it's a two-way street. The relationship has to work on both sides. If somebody reaches out to you and says, if you have questions, please contact me, and you truly have a question, contact me. Contact me and ask me. Contact Erica and ask her.
Because if you're saying those were the council members...
Contact anybody on council, and, and, you know, we received a lot of phone calls of people yelling at us about trash. You know what?
I didn't. She's not...
Yeah, yeah, Sarah and Faith are in the last fight.
I, I think Sarah did say...
She's in the line of...
Hey, you know what? I'll take it.
But to call to sitting hall and yell at us that, you know, somebody's sticker is incorrect, and it's our fault, and we say, well, did you call Texas Pride? And you say no, but you're yelling at us, like, you're doing a disservice to like you being able to get the service, because Texas Pride hasn't been notified. But we don't drive a trash truck. I mean, if I could to alleviate some of the frustration, the pain, trust me, like, the people that I work with, everybody would know. I would jump in a trash truck and go pick up your trash if I could.
From our hospital bed.
Huh?
So...
People are frustrated.
I'd say that was so much of the source.
No, it was not.
Right, sure.
Well, right, that's logical.
And that's, yeah, that is logical.
That's why she said...
Yeah, but she's saying you haven't contacted them first, you know? I mean, that's just a lie.
Yes, I've not complained once.
Yeah.
I'd like to contact them, but they don't.
Accepted this meeting in front of everyone.
That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I think Cody chimed in. Everybody would agree. I put my personal phone number on every message that I send. If you give me email, if it's on Facebook, and I've said, I'll be happy to answer. I put my phone number every time, and no one calls. Please feel free, if you didn't feel free before, I'm asking you, please feel free, call us. You don't have to wait to a meeting to get an answer. Call us. Come by. Set up something when it's convenient for you.
I have to respond, Mayor. May I ask, may I ask, say one thing?
Sure.
The contact information on the city's website, for transparency's sake, has one phone number. It doesn't have these council members' phone numbers. It doesn't have yours, and the email address is, is one for Jennifer. There is no trend, there is no trend, and I do have yours. But I'm saying, if I want to talk, if it says Kelly Matula, and I want to email her, I gotta go through you. Why? Why is that? That's not transparent.
Because our council members all are working full-time, and if they give you a email address that's their personal address, they may not see it. But if Erica receives it and contacts them directly, it's faster.
Well, the sense I have is she's vetting it and gonna get in front of me and talk to them first. That's the way it appears.
I'm sorry you're interpreting it that way.
I'm not the only one there.
That's not how it's been over time. I mean, we tried, maybe when you were mayor, I can't remember exactly.
We all had email addresses.
Simonson email addresses, and thankfully, nobody checked them or used them.
No one used them.
When you finally got into it, when somebody changed off the council, there were 100 or 10 or however messages that have never been opened. So this process is not to vet anything out, and, you know, open records, as you well know. We don't delete things. We don't hide things. Can't convince the public.
And also, when I add that all of your council people are on Facebook, you can message these people. It's how I contact them if I can't get a hold of them.
Facebook doesn't count.
Okay, well, Facebook doesn't count for you, and I appreciate that, but you can email me, and I can put you in contact.
You need one focal point, and that needs to be the city website, or it needs to be...
The city website is our...
It's not the city website, it's Facebook, and tell the whole community what the deal is. And I'm really adamant about this, because I had no idea there was any Facebook thing. The city of Simonton website is there. You can do a Google search. You can find it. It comes up. It represents itself as the voice and the information to the community. And I come to this meeting tonight, and I found out I've missed all this stuff, because it's on Facebook, which is packed with fake news and all kinds of stuff.
They just been on a personal level. On a personal level, we can go, hey, call me, I need to ask you a question.
But in fairness...
Right. I mean, I get it.
Let's just talk about the target audience. It's anybody from 20 to 100.
Oh, Lori has private messaged me to get permanent on my deck.
I'm just saying, my grandpa is on Facebook. I'm not calling him my grandpa, but my grandpa's not.
So what's it gonna be? Website or Facebook?
The website is out to date, and the website is kept...
It's gonna be both?
Yes, sir.
What about Instagram?
Instagram is our social media, and we do that, too.
I need to do that, too, so I need to check all of those things. What about TikTok?
We're not...
That's the Chinese.
Huh?
TikToking is not recommended for girls.
That's discrimination. We don't want TikTok.
I'm so sorry.
It's private.
Snapchat.
Oh, if I have Snapchat, I'll add you.
The governor prohibits it.
Okay, this is very interesting experiment on social media. Yes, the city website is our official communication. If you want to enjoy the supplemental, that's great, but the city is our official communication. Call us, email us anytime, city hall.
I understood there was information on Facebook that wasn't on the city website, and, and that's why I missed it.
Well, it wasn't official until tonight, so now that we know, we'll be sure to put that on about the trash.
There's more than enough.
Okay, council, anyone else have a report?
There's more than enough.
No.
Thank you. Stacy, I haven't walked in. No, I'm part of a meeting, so I love you. I don't do Snapchat. My kids do.